And this, this is a big deal for our city. This is resolution number 2664 pertaining to the purchase of property 311 10th Street. And before we get into it, I would just like to add, this building is 911 10th Street, and I've always loved that address. But 311 10th Street is also good, and we might have to have a 311 number instituted, depending on how this goes. So Mr. Slawinski, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your humor.
Are you presenting this this evening?
Yeah, I'll start us off. Thank you, Mayor. I'll start us off, and then I'll turn it to, with some brief, I'll start with some brief comments. I'll turn it to Steve, who will go over some of the transaction in more detail. Also, we have Jeff Hanson here, who will talk a bit about the finances of it. I talked about this in a larger presentation back in February. I won't go through all that detail again here right now, but I'll, in the interest of time, summarize it a bit. What we're looking at is to purchase, as you said, Mayor, 311 10th Street, which includes an office building of about 160,000 square feet, just over seven acres of land. And the purpose of the purchase would be to create, in the office building, a civic center project, which would include city government offices, Golden Police Department, Golden History Museums, space for cultural entities, and then potential of looking at the surrounding land for future development at some point. We would intend, we intend to vacate the buildings we currently have along the creek here in our, in our current location, and then, in the future, engage the public as to what ought to be here going forward. I would imagine that's going to take probably several years of time before we get to that point. So this, this purchase is not going to be an immediate project in the sense that it'll be done tomorrow. This is more, Steve described it to me as more of a generational project, and I think he's accurate there. This may be something that evolves over time, particularly what happens with the, the property we're currently occupying. So we brought this forward initially for consideration by council, really to take advantage of opportunities in a strategic fashion. This wasn't something that we necessarily had planned on, but it was an opportunity that presented itself, and there were several reasons we looked at it. One, to address some of our own city office facility needs. But we looked at trying to address some of the other issues that have been ongoing in the community over time, that we've talked about in the past, some recent, some longer, further back, those being cultural, space for cultural entities in our community. We've had conversation with cultural entities over the years about some of the space needs they have. The Clear Creek Master Plan was one that we tackled some years back now, and it envisioned some changes to this corridor, but never really the opportunity to do it. And then lastly, really directing and controlling change, which is one common theme in our Golden Vision 2030, but really doing that in the heart of Golden, in our downtown area, and the city would be in the best position to do it, having control and ownership over, over the land. Or, I'm not saying here, and I don't think anybody's suggesting here, that this, this project is a higher, or any of the things that it addresses that I mentioned is a higher priority than any other, you know, issue that has come up in the community recently. But what we're saying is, this is an opportunity to address and check off of our list some of the things that we've been talking about in a, in a strategic fashion through this investment. I'm pleased that we were able to, Steve will get into negotiate favorable terms to the benefit of the city on this project. That'll help us, especially related to the finances, and I wanted to make just a couple of comments. Jeff will get into some of the details about it, but we will always plan, budget for, manage the city's finances conservatively. I think we've always taken that approach. That's sort of our strategy. It is what has really put us in the positive financial place we're in today that allows us to take advantage of these kind of opportunities when they come about. We experienced that when we built the Lincoln Lookout Project. We're able to tackle that and contribute to it because we're in a good financial spot, and we still are in a good financial spot. What always concerns me as a city manager, and I think Jeff would echo this, is our operating costs. That's, that's the thing we really look at more than anything else when it comes to budget and finance. Those are costs that, whether it's new programming, staff, ongoing operational costs are the ones that always concern you because going forward, they have long-term and different types of consequences to them than, than capital projects. In this, with this purchase, I think we actually have the opportunity to address some of those costs and better control them through efficiencies that we're going to be able to gain by consolidating some city offices and consolidating some of our operations. So that's one advantage that I see, just from a financial point of view on, with regard to this project. So without taking up too much time, because I know we're, we're getting towards the end of our timeframe, I'll kick it to Steve. He'll walk you through some of the financial, or some of the transactional details of the purchase agreement, and then Jeff can touch on some of the finances.
Thank you, Mr. Slawinski. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Actually, I was going to be your finance director, too, tonight unless you actually have hard questions. Because tonight, we're going to talk conceptually a little bit more. So, good evening, council. Thank you very much. Mr. Slawinski and I talked about him setting the stage, which is, I think, is important because, as back in February, it's, it's kind of the vision and the opportunity, but I have to speak ad nauseam a little bit. In 1991, City of Golden enacted a sales tax increase to a capital fund that allowed us to do virtually everything we've done since, and there were two big things that came out of that. And the point of this is, next minute or two, is about big ideas every decade or so, every generation or so, and actually how they relate, they relate in a way to debt. They relate in a way to the length of debt when you do big ideas. In 1991, we've secured funding for the downtown project and the Golden Community Center, and they became the big thing we did. Downtown project spurred a lot of the renaissance of downtown with the urban renewal. In 2000, we did have a bond issue. Oh, we had debt for the community center, it was before Tabor. I now remember. Tabor was, voted in in 1992, and the debt was issued before that, so it was issued by the city. The downtown project was pay-as-you-go. In 2000, we did have a bond issue for a golf course splash and a million dollars' worth of open space. That debt will retire in 2020, and that relates to much of what the Investment Forum Task Force talked about, and much of why this transaction, if it happens, is affordable and prudent. In 2006, the big thing that wasn't necessarily for the community, but certainly allowed the organization to provide great services to the community, was the City Shops Project. City Shops Project up off Catamount Drive. We had to buy, frankly, we had to buy 28 acres of land in order to find a 10-acre piece of ground to put the shops on, then ended up being in the real estate business to sell off some properties, used certificates of participation for that, and our new fire station number one at the time. Again, incurring debt that will come off in 2026, which, those two numbers, 2020 and 2026, are important to why this transaction, if you want to proceed with it, can be done in a fiscally prudent way and still allow a good amount of money for capital needs in the Sales and Use Tax Fund. I will talk only of the Sales and Use Tax Fund. Mr. Slawinski mentioned the operating funds, which we're always much more cautious about, but we also have other funds in the, in the city that are looked at independently. And then, so here it is, 2019, 2020, and the question is, is it time for the next big idea? And if you asked us a year ago, the answer might have been, well, we don't know. But sometimes opportunity knocks, and this is a time where you're, you are presented with a decision as to whether this is, this is the next big idea. So I will talk briefly tonight about the transaction, about the financial and fiscal considerations, and a little bit, because what we keep hearing in the community is the, okay, what does this mean? What is the whole corridor going to be like? What's the big picture going to be like? And as Mr. Slawinski said, we don't know. The community has to decide that. The difference between a real estate transaction is, you don't really have a community negotiate a real estate transaction. It's your job to negotiate a real estate transaction, and if we do it, then we have a big, big generational project for the whole community to help us figure out. So those three things. The background that City Manager gave in February was that we were made aware late last year that the Miller Coors folks, who had mostly vacated the building at 311, kind of the picture, please, 311 10th Street, were going to be vacating, and that this property may go up for sale. And frankly, at the time, the assumption was that it might go up for sale for a redevelopment project of seven parcels. There's actually seven parcels, five on the north side of 10th Street, each labeled there, and two on the south side of 10th Street. As Jason mentioned, in February, it got the juices going as to, well, what, what could this be? What should this be for the community? Is it too big and bold for us? Is it appropriate? Is it the next big thing for the community, for the next generation? Following that, we began working on a potential transaction and presented it to you at executive session, and then, more formally, a couple of weeks ago. And so, before you tonight, you have a resolution that if you adopt it, it will endorse a contract, a real estate contract, for the acquisition of those seven parcels totaling about 7.1 acres and a 160,000-square-foot building. The agreed-upon price is $12,250,000 in real estate terms, which are often quoted in dollars per square foot for a building, if, either land or a building, depending on what you're buying. In terms of a building, that turns out to $76.56 per square foot of building area. I will show you some comps in a few minutes as to why we think that's appropriate. It does include a substantial amount of office furniture, and to, my confession at this point is, I didn't realize how hard it would be to inventory it, and council had a tour of the building last week. There is a lot of furniture in the lower level, the main level, and the second level, what they call the third floor, but virtually all of those workstations are being included in the purchase, and what that will allow is, and they may be moved to another floor, it will allow, at such time as some municipal uses or maybe our partner uses move in, they won't have to invest in all-new furniture. At some point in the future, they might want to, but that's a pretty big benefit. The seller can remain in the space they're occupying now, although they'll probably consolidate into the medical clinic in the basement and one floor until January 31st of last, of next year for free rent. That was one of the concessions in the negotiation. They may ask to negotiate a longer market rent occupancy, and that could be beneficial to us while we're making plans to have a market-rate tenant helping to cover costs. If we go forward, the main inspection period runs until mid-June. The inspections are comprehensive and detailed for this property. They include engineering, inspections of the structural integrity of the building, mechanical and electrical and plumbing systems, heating and cooling systems, the roof itself, the skyline on top that is perhaps an issue in the long-term future, environmental studies, Americans with Disabilities studies, a survey, an exact survey to determine the exact size, a very detailed title review. Reviewing title on a property is always an important part of it, and this particular property is adjacent to parcels that have what we call exceptions that date back 100-plus years as to when the Coors family was working on the brewery. We're working on getting the title commitment narrowed down to the specific parcel on the south side of 10th Street in order to try to eliminate most of those exceptions. A review of maintenance and operations records and appraisals. So there are, there are many steps that are involved with determining whether the city wants to proceed with the purchase or not. In many ways, it's just like buying a house where you have this inspection, but much more complicated. And so, we are working with qualified consultants in all of those areas. We actually accelerated the environmental to make sure we didn't find anything too scary, particularly on the north side of 10th Street, and have some early indications that it's not too scary. We don't have real indications yet, but that is an important part of any transaction. That inspection period goes till the middle of June. There's a 30-day period thereafter to try to work through the implications of what we find in the inspections, whether there's any renegotiation of terms. And the decision as to whether to go, your final go-no-go decision under the current schedule is no earlier than the middle of July, which would allow a 30-day period to formally secure the funds for the initial purchase and a closing in the middle of August. The reason that I say no earlier than, and this is a good time to mention, you received an amended resolution by email yesterday, I believe it was, and that is because we're already working on an amendment to extend time. Extend time for the title review and, by quite a bit of time, because the title review can't really be completed until the survey is completed that shows all of any relevant exceptions. So it could actually, the timeframe could be longer, but the most optimistic timeframe, if you decide to proceed tonight, and if the inspection process goes well, would be August, mid-August for a closing. So any questions on the transaction itself, the terms? I apologize, it's a very, very lengthy standard contract that is used, but the, normally the most important stuff is the addendum.
One, it's not really on the contract terms, but the one thing that caught my attention that you mentioned is regarding the title exceptions and trying to narrow them to the south side of 10th Street. I am presuming we will still get title insurance on the north side of 10th Street, just subject to multiple exceptions. Is that correct?
The title commitment is for all the parcels. These parcels are well-defined and easy to define. The challenge that we've had, and I realize, oh, that's the one map I should have had, this parcel here, even though it's mostly dozens of planted lots, the county assessor and the seller considers this parcel to go all the way over to about here. The entire brewery's building on the north side of the creek. So all of the exceptions that were included in the first round of the title commitment go half a mile down valley. It is this parcel that we are defining by, and this line has to be created by the survey. This is not a planted lot line. So in order to get a reasonable title commitment, we've gone over to a line about like that, because this line is defined. This is another ownership for the farmer's high line. So complete survey of all the property, complete environmental review of all the property, complete title commitment and title insurance, but this one gave me a title commitment with more exceptions than I've ever seen in my life by five times more. And they all, they're all 100 years old. So, so that's the transaction, and that's the process we're under with. If you do not vote yes tonight, we will cease that, and we will not have spent very much money, but we will have at least got started. In terms of fiscal considerations and financial considerations, the, I won't repeat about the, the timing issue and the, the good conversations over the last two years at the Golden Investment Forum Task Force, where a new municipal facility was put in because it was on people's wish lists and on the future plans. And it was something where we figured, well, if we bought at current prices, if we had to build at current prices at about $400 a square foot, then, no, that's a lot of money. And then museum is a lot of money, and cultural facilities is a lot of money, but the, the good thing, one of the very best things about the Investment Forum Task Force was thinking about how we should invest funds as debt service rolls off in 2020 and 2026, and without trying to prioritize things, because you always have to be strategic, what, what are the areas that, that rise to the top? And sometimes they're, they are based on opportunity. So the, what we asked Mr. Hanson to do was to secure a scenario where, the most prudent and fiscally responsible way, we could proceed with this transaction and not limit City Council's ability to use the Sales and Use Tax Fund for other purposes. And so, in your packet, you receive this, the front page is real easy to understand, and this page here, that, I've described it in the memo, and everyone in the audience, I hope you would read the memo at some point. It talks about three scenarios. It talks about managing debt service in a way to maximize council's flexibility to do other projects, and most prudently deal with the fact that you currently are spending about three and a half million dollars on debt service until 2020, where it goes down a bit, and then in 2026, when it goes down a bit further because of the shops. So in your packet, this is if you only borrowed enough to buy the building. We put that in because you might want to know it. It's, it's not necessarily a very responsible way to go, because the building will cost, it will cost money to renovate the building, to, to put a police station in it, to put a city council chambers in it, and regardless of whether we fund any of our partner renovations, the building is built in 1981, and one of the reasons that we have a very appropriate price on it is the fact that it's obvious there will be some renovations. This column is a $20 million debt issuance. This is a $24 million debt issuance. These numbers are meant to be a, probably a low end and a high end of what an initial investment in the building would be. Going back to the square footage concept, this would equal $150 a square foot total project, building square foot, and this was somewhat less than that. The relevance of all of this is, is in the memo, and it is that by, and, you know, if you're buying a house, you may or may not be able to use this much flexibility, but, but it's appropriate for us to be able to use it. If you found a good lender, you could use it. And what I mean is, for the first two years, until the debt service rolls off for the golf course splash and a million dollars' worth of open space, Mr. Hanson has proposed interest-only. So by an interest-only loan, you reduce your payments dramatically, and then for the next few years, and up until 2026, it's a moderate level of principal, but from 2026 to the end of the 20-year debt service, debt issuance, which would be 2040, some of the payment, the payments are what I would call backend loaded, that for a consistent level of debt service, which these two have, at 1.5 million a year compared to the 3.5 we're paying now, or 2 million a year compared to the 3.5 million we're paying now, we would be able to fund this project and have maximum flexibility for other projects in the Sales and Use Tax Fund. You are not this evening approving financing. That is a very separate step that you must look at carefully and decide. The point of this portion of the memo is, this is not an imprudent or rash concept for you to make this investment now, and yes, we do not have 12 and a quarter million dollars sitting in the bank with nothing better to do than to write a check for this, but this is not a, this is a prudent and financially responsible way to approach this acquisition if you so choose, and it would leave, in the near term, it leaves between a million and a half and $2 million a year unprogrammed in the SUT fund, and within a few years, that goes up to 3 million, and a few more years, up to 4 million of unprogrammed. You may recall, the SUT that you approved last year had a total of 41, $42 million unprogrammed between now and 2028, and this would take 14 million of that in that period of time, leaving 28 of unprogrammed money for you to spend on other high-priority issues in the community. If we proceed, all of that information will be discussed with you in detail, perhaps late May, perhaps early June, by Mr. Hanson in terms of what do you, what exactly do you want to do in terms of debt service or debt issuance for this property? So I guess questions about the fiscal, financial considerations and the, why the decisions that you will be make can be done in a prudent, responsible way.
Could you talk a little bit about the, it's buried here in the memo, and about ancillary revenues related to investments or rent payments. It's an aspect that's, has one line in the memo, and I think a lot of people in the community don't really understand a lot about that from when I talk to people about it. So could you elaborate a little bit more on that?
So, the space study that was presented to council last fall indicated that our longer-term needs are about half the size of this building. So it would not make any sense to be going into this without the idea of a civic center, without the idea of partners. So we would expect that those partners would pay, would be paying rent, and that rent should cover at least their operating costs, or, no, operating, our operating costs for utilities, common areas, keeping the elevators running, et cetera. In the shorter term, it is possible that there are some folks, I mentioned earlier, that Coors might want to stay an extra period of time. There are folks that we would expect to pay market rent, and market rent in this community gross. There's, there's many kinds of rent calculations. One is triple net, where you have a number, and then the tenant also pays taxes, insurance, and common area maintenance, landscaping, snowplowing, et cetera. The other one is gross. The, the market in Golden for office space, if you did it on a gross basis, is in the neighborhood of the high 20s to $30 a square foot. So if we have tenants in the early years, or, or our, our community partners are paying an appropriate rent, and you may not make them pay full market rent, that goes to make sure that we're not, we're not burdened by operating costs for the building, but also it can go to debt service. The other thing that I may or may not have mentioned is, this doesn't, this doesn't assume any of the other issues with other assets that the city has. Assets on the south side of 10th Street here, there's a great community interest in. You may or may not want to sell the NX building, but no benefit from that is included in this model. This is kind of the worst case. If, if we were paying all of the debt service ourselves, and we're only getting our partner's share of operating, it's still a responsible move.
Great. Thank you.
Steve, here's, thank you. You were going to say something about comps.
Yes, I was. A number of weeks ago, I showed council some comps, and real estate, real estate is interesting. Real estate is, is about location, 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 but it's also about size. What we know is that small-to-medium-sized buildings in Golden recently are selling for the mid-to-high 200s per square foot to 300-plus per square foot, and there's a listing in downtown Golden at $340 a square foot right now. And one of the cool things about real estate is that transactions are public, so we get to know. 1600 Jackson Street, across from Safeway, sold a year or so ago at $158.80 a square foot. The building on 12th Street, across from the post office, sold about three weeks ago for $208 a square foot for a big building. So it's, it would be naive to think that large office buildings sell for the same as small buildings that are going for $300, or what new construction costs. The scary thing is, new construction just costs typically double of what an existing building costs anymore. If you go broader, and there are interesting situations, some are actually, none are lower than what we're paying, but there's a, a building at Van Gordon that was being purchased for a scrape for $90 a square foot, for the west side of Union Square. An office tower at 200 Union, the one that has 240 Union in it, in case you want to go to that restaurant, selling for $197 a square foot. So that's kind of the range, that office buildings sell for the mid-to-high 100s to over 200. over 200. Smaller buildings in Golden are selling for 300. That's why, at our level, staff level, we're believing that buying a building for $76 a square foot and then investing in it and ending up with a project for between 150 or maybe higher per square foot is a responsible way, is a responsible price and value and a great opportunity.
Thank you, Steve. I would like to interrupt here because I know we want to discuss this fully. It's a generational issue, and I don't believe we want to say, well, we only have 10 minutes. So is there a motion to extend the mandatory quitting time?
I saw it moved.
A second.
Okay, so that will be till 10:30?
That's what I thought the mayor would tell me.
I have to thank Counselor Reed, who reminded me what time it is, because this is a fascinating issue. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay, only two more minutes.
Go ahead.
Honest.
You're answering, oh, you're still talking about comparables?
No, no. I was going on to the third topic, which is a very brief description of the big picture. So there's many ways to look at this. Staff, I think, is looking at it as three separate issues, three separate projects. The what to do in the building, who are our partners, how is the space planned, what is the best way to do it, some logistic things, getting fiber down the street to it, looking at some renovations that need to happen. That's one project. That's mostly interior to staff for the municipal area and presenting new ideas, but also Mr. Slominski is handling, talking to partners. The one that we hear the most about, and to interrupt myself, the way we've described it this way is prominent on the guiding Golden page, the big idea page for Civic Center, and we would hope that people would look at that. The really big one is what happens, and one way that we've been describing it is west of Washington, south of 10th Street, and plus the community center in Lions Park at the end. What happens with what the Clear Creek Corridor Plan suggested, other plans, downtown character plan in the early 90s? This idea's been around a long time. So that's the big one, and that's the thing, the one that we think we could start next year, but will take a couple of years or longer to go through that and to really carefully look at it. The third one, if we could have the other picture back, ma'am? It's about Gustown. And that has to do with, there's a lot of interesting, Gustown has a neighborhood, HBB is looking at, could it possibly be a historic district? And controlling the future of all of these parcels, either, well, leaving them as parking lots is one thing to do, that hardly seems like the best, really, really, long-term thing to do with that neighborhood, but it's a kind of a different conversation and it relies on solving parking aggregation consolidation, and it may not, it's of great interest to some folks, it may not be as great of interest to the whole community as over here, the rest of the Civic Center corridor. The reason that I mentioned west of Washington for the really big discussion is because east of Washington, not counting Gustown, is really a connections and urban design effort that is kind of, maybe there's four. There's either four efforts, or it's part of the east side of Washington, is how do we connect Parfit to Vanover to the Civic Center building? And do it through physical connections, do it through design, do it through 10th Street, do it through a reconnection for pedestrians of 9th Street, do it through bridges over Tucker Gulch. What does that entire design project look like? But it probably doesn't change land uses. Parfit Park is Parfit Park, Vanover is Vanover, the south side of this would be the south side of this. So should you vote yes, and should we actually close on this property? It opens, it's the start. It's the start of between three and four, depending on how you look at it, really exciting planning processes and our generational project. So having used up too much time, if you have specific financial questions, Mr. Hanson is here, but you will have lots of conversation with him if we go forward as we get into actually deciding how much debt to take on and what terms you want to go with. So that would be our presentation, Council.
Thank you, Steve. Are there further questions for Steve?
What's your pleasure? You want to have a motion and further questions?
Well, I'd like for us to get the information out on the table. If something comes up later, that's fine, but if somebody has a question in their mind now before discussion, this would be a good time to ask.
Just a quick question. So what would be the implications for property tax? I'm assuming we get a property tax from the current tenants?
Oh.
If we buy it, I'm assuming there would not be a property tax anymore?
Yes.
Is there a possessory tax?
Ooh.
Oh, okay.
If we rent to a, if we rent to someone who is not a nonprofit or a government, they would have to pay a possessory interest tax. And the reason that came up is, the actual purchaser of the building on 12th Street is the state land board. And so for the DDA's purposes, I've been trying to figure out what that means, and it does mean a property tax hit. The other part of it is, because this building is in a parcel with the entire north half of the brewery, I have no idea what its assessed value is, and I know that they've been challenging it over the last couple of years. So it will make a difference. There will be, at our mill levy of 12.34, it will have a measurable, but rather not significant, impact.
Okay, thank you.
And Rob?
Just two quick ones that I think you can handle, Steve. On the financing aspect, as I read the contract, it was 135 days after mutual acceptance of the contract to get our financing in order. So is that our window to figure out whether it's a financial, prudent financial move?
Yes, although it's interesting that that happens to be 15 days before the end of the inspection resolution period.
At any rate, we have more than enough time, so we don't need to have the financing nailed down tonight.
Right, the, oh my gosh, certainly.
Yes, I just wanted to make that clear.
The one that we felt was most important was getting the 120 days for the inspection, which is to the middle of June, and then the 30 days for inspection resolution. And frankly, that's probably a date we put in because Mr. Hanson needs 30-plus days to secure the financing if you go, once you pull the trigger on it.
Okay. And then my second question was, the $400 cost to build new construction, that is not including land acquisition, is that right?
That is a number that is thrown out by our space planning architect when we were working on that, but very likely not. Institutional construction is very expensive.
Thank you.
Paul?
You talked about inspection going half a mile east. I didn't understand that. Are we responsible for improvements that are necessary, rehabilitation or whatever? So what's the inspection for the additional space about?
Great question. No.
Okay, well, that's good.
It's the title review.
Okay.
The title review is to make sure the person who you're buying from actually, if you ever buy a house, make sure the person you're buying from actually owns the building, who they own money to, who they owe money to, and what easements they've granted over the years that would encumber the property. And so when you add the entire brewery complex, there were literally 100 exceptions. And we are quite confident that when we narrow down back to this, where they only built this 30 years ago, there will be way, way, way less. So the title review that we're going to do is only of these seven parcels, but the title commitment we got is unusable, which is why we're extending the title review until the end of the survey, because we can't even start on the title review for this parcel until we narrow the legal description and get rid of the other parcels.
Go ahead.
So for the puny question of the evening, on the east side of the building, there's a road that is used to bring goods into the lower floor. And that's not part of what we're buying. Will we have use of that road in order to take advantage of that entryway?
Yes, by easement, because it also serves the brewery.
Sure.
They were not inclined to sell it to us and have us give them an easement. They were inclined to grant us an easement, and it also provides access to a small parking area. So there's parking, loading, direct access into the building by easement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jim, were you proposing a motion?
Yes. I move approval of Resolution 2664 as amended.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. And Casey, Council discussion. Anyone? Jim?
Well, I feel so positive about this because in my observations of Jason and his conservative fiscal policy, and Jeff from working with him, from Seaback and others, thoughtfully being proposals that really make financial sense, and Steve, of course, too. So I feel so comfortable about us doing this because we have been flexible historically, and Steve went through a list, but I just also add DeLong, the annex linking lookout in Washington Avenue, where we had flexibility to act. And this gives us a flexibility to ask, to act through COPs, and we serving as a decision-maker to go for certificates of participation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Laura?
I wish I had more excitement at this time of night, because I think it's really exciting, but I'm sort of out of excitement.
It's like a night only, just for the moment.
It's been a long day. But I do think it's such an exciting opportunity, really unexpected when staff first came to us and required some, oh, well, that would be interesting, let me think about that, because it wasn't anything we had considered. But I agree, it is a long-term lasting for the future of Golden decision, not a carefully-planned, community-surveyed, you know, effort. And that's sort of where the decision-making comes in on our part of, do we understand Golden's values, do we understand what Golden needs for the future, do we, you know, has staff provided us with enough information to feel confident in the decision? And I feel really good about the decision to move forward. The one thing that I would ask as part of this process is, Steve touched on it a little bit, it's going to be really exciting to talk about, you know, for the community to talk about what happens here, and less exciting to talk about where things go and who's in the building, and just that we all caution ourselves to, we got to do that part first. We've got to make those decisions about who's in the building, how much are we spending on the renovations, what needs to be done, when is it going to happen, timeframe for the moves. It's the least probably interesting part for the community, but it really is the most important part that's in front of us next, if this all goes through correctly. So not to jump ahead and get into that next conversation, that can come next year, and we should spend a lot of time on that. We just shouldn't jump the gun and start those conversations before we're ready. And then the other piece of it is, you know, if the closing date's August 15th or after or whatever, I guess I'm looking from staff of kind of, what's our schedule? You guys have a lot of work over the next, you know, 150 days, but what's our schedule of decision-making, reports back on how things are going? Do we just see them in a weekly update? Are they posted online? Do we talk about them in public meetings? What are our touchpoints in this process, and where will we need to make decisions over the next year? I think that'd be really helpful to just lay out a general roadmap for us, even if the dates move and change, that's okay, but just so we know kind of where we go from here and what's going to be our role and our opportunity to weigh in on some of these decisions going forward.
Casey, do you want to go next?
Sure, although I think our sitting manager also had a finger up. He had a one finger, not the two. Yeah, right. So I think he wanted to talk on that same point.
I'll just briefly respond. I think what we'd like to do is just kind of map out what that looks like after August, and then I would envision, you know, touching base and checking with Council and study session, so from time to time as necessary as we move forward. But at least have some, have it mapped out, what are the decision points we need to do and kind of the general timeframe of what that looks like.
That'd be great, thank you.
I'll just say, yeah, no, I could see, I could see, I'm tuned to the one finger. The, no, I'd just say, I do think it's incredibly exciting, and I'm getting more excited the longer we talk.
Oh, good.
But maybe it's because I've had coffee. But no, I think it's an exciting project. And I'm really sympathetic, though, to Barb's comment and others in the community about, hey, wait a minute, what about these discussions of, we got to tighten our belt and build back up our reserves, and what about our other priorities? And in some ways, I really think that a lot of the goals that this achieves for us really were priorities all along in different Clear Creek master plans and other ideas, although in many ways, I think they were so pie in the sky, they never really percolated up as a top do-it-soon priority because they're so big. We, you know, in many ways, our other priorities we were trying to focus on were smaller in scale and seen as more easily achievable. But I do, like Jim was saying, I take great comfort in all the thoughtful way they've approached this with Jeff and Jason and Steve. I feel a lot more comfortable that this is both very achievable and has so many great benefits, and I'm certainly on board.
Anyone? Yes, there are a few people here. Sarah, how about you?
Well, I'm very excited. I'm actually a little envious because, of course, my time in this period going forward is now limited, but I'm hoping that I'm invited to opening day, whenever that is. There are a lot of things to be excited about. The thing that, and I've mentioned this before, but in our meetings and in other meetings, but I am actually very excited about the fact that we have control of these parcels of land, that we are able to make whatever decisions we make about that, and that it doesn't go to redevelopment or that, I mean, whoever, I mean, we heard some of the ideas about what it could be, and I'm just thrilled that we are in control of these plots of land. I do think it's pretty important, and it's already been mentioned, but I think it's really important to communicate very clearly about the processes that are in place for capital improvements, you know, how every year we have that opportunity to look at that and to reevaluate that citizens are doing that, staff is doing that, Council's doing that. That happens every year, whether we're buying buildings or not, and so that will be looked at closely. And again, what you said, it's, and it's what Barb said, in terms of looking at what we still, what, how we can still consider and think about the other things that are not happening at this site, you know, the other things that our residents have said are important and are not happening at this site. So that happens through capital improvements, but it's not just capital improvements, it's other things, too. So I just think it's important that we're very clear about those mechanisms and that that's included in whatever communication plan we develop as we work on this.
Me talk about real estate? I'll pass. So let me start by trying to address Barb Warden's concerns. I understand your position or your thought that it's unsettling that we would move forward with something like this without public input. The fact of the matter is, as a government entity, when you have an opportunity like this, if we waited for government input, the building would have sold to another buyer, and we would have lost all control. So I think it's, as a general concept, I think a lot of what we do involves public input and must, in this circumstance, you know, if we just simply can't do it from a time perspective. a time perspective. I also agree that a well-informed citizenry is really important, and I'm going to be looking to citizens, not only for what we do with this building, but also what we do with the Clear Creek Corridor. When I reference what we do with this building, we are voting tonight on approving the contract that Jason already signed. We have not gotten to the point where we have partnered with anybody or signed any leases, and I think we need to be very aware of the fiscal responsibilities that we have as a board, to make sure that we're trying to recover the capital outlay that we're making. In terms of the capital outlay that we're making, I doodled up the cost, at four hundred dollars a square, let me step back, our space needs study said we would need seventy-seven thousand square feet. This is a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, so Steve's right, it's basically twice what we have a foreseeable need for. At four hundred dollars a square foot of construction cost, to build seventy-seven thousand square feet is north of thirty million dollars in today's dollars, without buying the land. I frankly am not envisioning any parcels of land that would allow us to build seventy-seven thousand square feet of office building to consolidate operations and save money. So I think it is a fiscally sound decision to spend twenty or twenty-four million to save ourselves money in the long run, especially if we get money back, and I think it's very likely we will get money back, both in terms of rent and in terms of disposition of other assets. Then we go into the Clear Creek Corridor, which is what everybody's going to be really excited about, and I think that truly is going to be the legacy that we leave to our heirs, and I don't mean the seven of us, I mean our generation of adults in this room. I think that that is a legacy that we will never have an opportunity to recreate, so that's it.
Very good, thank you. Paul?
Beginning to be disenchanted with Rob thinking like I do, and addressing my exact issues, but the idea that we will need seventy-seven thousand square feet at some point to replace the facilities we now have, is something that the council looked at last year, and came to that conclusion that we didn't need to do it that day, but it's coming. And so here, we have a chance to get that seventy-seven thousand square feet in this building, but if we went and, for twenty, let's say max at twenty-four million, if we went out and had to, you know, build that building, it would be thirty million. So we're getting, we would have had to spend thirty million anyway, in addition, we're getting some additional square footage that we'll be able to use for other purposes, and that's just in the building. So the land that comes with it, I agree with Laura, the, you know, there's two phases here. What are we going to do in the building, and how is it going to lay out? And then, okay, let's get that done before we start deciding about the Clear Creek Corridor, or deciding what uses we're going to make of the property next door. And I, so I agree that it could be tedious for us to do the first part, I'm excited about it, but we need to do that first. But we have the benefit of this other land that we would not have if we were just replacing the seventy-seven thousand square feet that we needed to have for the municipal services in the future. So that's another bonus that's, in addition, just to the building square footage itself. So I said exactly what Rob said a different way, but I wanted to be sure that we understood that, what the kind of bargain we're talking about here and getting it. And when Rob says, well, look, if we waited and took a poll, or took a vote, or couldn't do it, someone else buys it, they use that other acreage for something else, and then we're scrambling in the future to find someplace to put our municipal service, and it would be difficult. So that was just the happenstance that we're faced with as part of being on a city council. So I think that's, you know, basically where we are. I think the last point that was made was, oh, wait, we're sitting here being frugal, and all of a sudden we have lots of money to spend for this, boy, that just seems, you know, there's something there that just doesn't jive with what we were talking about with regard to frugality. On the other hand, the investment forum has been talking about uses they'd like to look for in the future, and the property we're acquiring addresses some of those future needs that the investment forum is looking at. So I'm thinking we're, I don't know if the word "toofers" is the right answer here, but we're going to get the benefit of addressing some of those future needs by the building we're buying, and I think that that's, you know, good news for the city.
All right. I agree with absolutely everything council has said, and I have to say, I've been mayor long enough to know that I think I know how this vote is going to go. But I, for one, would, I feel privileged, you know, to be part of this opportunity for the future of Golden. We're investing in the future, and I think it's the right thing to do for Golden. Are we ready for our surprise vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I feel like we should somehow. That, thank you, that was a good recognition of the momentous nature of this decision.